Allow them to introduce themselves and then they'll all be answering the same questions. But they have different orders so that they can have a chance to go first and a chance to go last, which matters, right? All right, thank you so much. So we're gonna go ahead and start on this end because this is where I'm standing with Casey. And you have one minute to introduce yourself and this is flashing so I'm gonna give you mine.
I was gonna check, I guess I don't need to. Hello, my name is Casey Theryon and I am your conservative, but more importantly, I am your local voice for the Brooksville City Council, seat four. I was born and raised here in Brooksville, I spent my whole life here, except for a couple of months that I spent in Detroit, Michigan. And all I can tell you is that was awful. It did nothing for me except for show me that I need to stay put. This is a really special place and I intend on spending the rest of my life here. I graduated from Hernando High School, I'm a member of the Brooksville Rotary Club, and I am the proud owner of the Red Bull Pub here in Brooksville. I fell in love with small business working at the pub through college. I was originally gonna be a teacher, but I guess I got distracted, bought a restaurant. When I was at the pub, I realized what small business does for a community and what it can do for a place like Brooksville when you actually engage with everybody and get out there and do stuff. So in short, I'm a conservative, I'm a small business owner, I'm a Brooksvilleian, and I make really good things.
You're kidding. And I forgot to mention. Right, there's a ding time for you.
Oh, no. No, let's keep it down.
One minute.
Good morning. For those who don't know me, I'm Pat Rayton, I'm the current mayor of the city of Brooksville, been on the council for four years. Just some quick background, I've handled almost 20 years off and on with the city. I was finance director, city clerk back in the seventies. I was actually the first current city manager with the charter back change in 1980. I also served on the council since 1994 to 2000. You hear it a lot, but it does mean something. I was born here, and that was four years ago than Casey or probably any of them. I'm the old guy up here, but you know, this is my city, I love it. What I do now on the council, I do for the love of the city, and you just try to make your best decisions. The other things you know about me isn't much, like say, born, raised here. Being back to my wife and her child, I've been married to now for 57 years, so is that a, that a ding ding?
That's a ding.
That is, I got.
Thank you.
My name is Chris Kingsley, I've lived in Hernando County in Brooksville for about 32 years. Before I moved to Brooksville, I lived out in Ridge Manor, Turbinville. You were living out there about that same time, Casey was. I'm a father and I'm a grandfather, I'm a homeowner and taxpayer here in Brooksville. I've been here a little over two years, which doesn't sound like a lot. I've been in Hernando County for 32 years, and for eight years I worked across the street in the county building as a county commissioner. I'm a founding member of Hernando County and Brooksville Boys and Girls Club. I had a big brother for over four years, I did that. I was in the Brooksville Quonians that I am now again, and I have been in the past. I'm a small business owner with my brother and my sister. We had houses and then we sell them to people who may not ever have the opportunity to see a house. We help with their down payment and help find them interest and if they don't pay our loans, then if they don't, then we carry a loan for them. So I'm a veteran. Actually, it's a Vietnam era veteran, so I'm kind of simply attracted to Pat. I was in the Coast Guard and somebody brought up, Pastor Joe brought up during the invitation, all the things we have to do for all the people and all the work they've done down in southern Florida. But people seem to forget also that the Coast Guard was involved and they did an awesome job. And I'm also retired from the patrol and party.
Thank you, Brooksville Main Street and Hernando County Chamber of Commerce for putting this event on. And thank you, Caffo with the Bistro, always did a great job for the community. I'm a seventh generation Brooksville native. And through high school and college, I was in leadership academically and athletically. At Hernando, I was voted by my peers for Hernando, team leadership Hernando for the county, and also I was in student government. Athletically, I was North Sun Coast Defensive Player of the Year, the captain for the Leopards. In college, I had a fluoride scholarship to Appalachian State University to play defensive tackle. I also earned my degree in marketing. I had jobs, this was up in North Carolina, so I had job offers all over the country, but my heart and soul is here in Brooksville. I came back to Brooksville and I started off as a driller with an explosive company with five to six people in it. Now, seven years later, I'm the lead blaster with 17 employees, or one of the largest blasting companies in the state of Florida. That's not where my mission ends. My grandfather, my father, give back this community so much. And I felt a calling for the people and everyone in this community to give back with my sweat equity and time as your Brooksville City Council member.
Thank you so much. All right, so the first question is, who is the most important Star Wars character and maybe remember?
Jada.
If money, that was a good answer. If money was not a consideration, what is one project you'd like to see the city do that you believe would be transformative? And this is a one-minute response.
You know, that's a hard one because money is always an issue. And my, my goal is not to spend more of the taxpayers' dollars than necessary to make this city great. I'm not here to loosely spend or responsibly spend your money. But my vision would be to vitalize the downtown area. Obviously, we have parking issues and we have an issue with vacant buildings such as the Jimmy Building, also the lumberyard down the road. If we can create a fun, safe, secure environment to raise our youth, but also encourage, if I might all want to work at, provide bigger businesses to come into town. Make this, vitalize this community and create an infrastructure to handle the growth at hand.
Money is the issue all the time. And the thing, this was kind of a odd question, a kind of hard, but in my mind, it should be the infrastructure. Because years ago, cities and counties had inner roles, the cities provided the intimate things, they had the infrastructure, the streets, the lights, the water, the sewer. And counties, you know, had a road and maybe a fire department. But things have changed. So the problem with Brooksville is that the early infrastructure is failing. So I think we could have a city around 1,800. So as time goes by, it's sort of like, you know, in an apple, when the core rots, then the apple is no good. And not that everything is bad, but as you're building outwards and outwards with brand-new infrastructure, with brand-new infrastructure, what happens is the interior, the beginning infrastructure is falling apart. So if I had unlimited sources and unlimited money, what I would do is rebuild the infrastructure for the city of Brooksville and make it so that it lasts longer into the future without having to be torn up and replaced all the time.
Actually, he hit the nail on the head, but there is one other thing. The way I read the question was, what would your money be spent on to make the city more functional? Want to talk about two-way parents, one-way parents? You want to help the economy handle it down? You look at that too, and that's the price that you want to live in. Other than that, I have to agree with Mr. Kingsley. I think one of our main issues right now is our infrastructure. We set up a project, first year out of council, we started setting aside amounts every year for road infrastructure. We've done a lot of repaying and making things look better here. We have got to start looking at the infrastructure, we're having more and more problems as these pipes get older, the older than I am unfortunately. So I think if money was the one, I think we'd actually have to get infrastructure access.
So I hate to just sit here and admit that that was, but clearly we have an infrastructure problem. We've actually been here since 1856 and what happened was, you know, about 75, 80 years ago, they put in all these cast iron pipes all over the place. And cast iron rusts and it falls apart in the ground. And besides that, the pipes were too small to handle all the water that's supposed to go through. So Brooksville's made it a clay and limestone. Long story short, water does not go through clay and limestone very well. So it has to sit somewhere, and when it sits somewhere, we have to pump it out and have to move it to a water reclamation facility, which also needs to be redone. We probably need three or four times the size that we have now so we can afford for the incoming growth that we have coming and mitigate any problems that we currently have along with excess water that will come from hurricanes or any sort of catastrophic flooding events. Remember that no-named storm a couple of months, or a couple of years ago? It was raining for like 10 days until morning? That's the kind of thing we need to be paying attention to.
Yes, Pat, you're gonna go first on this next one. Name one thing that you think the city does really well and why you like it, and one thing you think it does poorly and how you would like to improve it, and that is also a one-minute response.
You know, to me, that's really something I talk to people. One thing the city does absolutely fantastic is pick up your garbage and your trash. And I have never heard any complaints from anybody because we pick up more than most people do. And we have people from the county saying, can't you come pick up out? And unfortunately, we can't. I don't like to state what does the city do poorly. I would rather say what the city does not do as well as I'd like to see it do. I'm gonna go back to infrastructure again, we need to set up a program to start rebuilding our infrastructure. I, 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 that's just what it goes down to.
I sort of thought this was a two-minute question since there were two different questions, but the thing that I brought up is that they do taxes well. And that's not necessarily a good thing in my mind. When you keep the tax rate exactly the same for three years or many years, and the property values are pulling up, say, $100,000 a year for a particular house, that means your taxes are going up. With the failure rate of new businesses at about 20%, what we need to do is make sure the tax rates, the taxes are lower in order... If I have, if I'm gonna open a small business and I'm paying, because it's the most expensive place in Hernando County to open a business or live is in Brooksville. Is, I'll go across the street to open my business, I'll save money if I have to. I mean, it's a great place to be and a great place to live, but taxes have to be considered a little bit more than what they are at this present time. And the thing that they haven't done well, and is brand new, and so when you think of Clearwater, you think of Beaches, but I'm not 100% sure what you think of specifically when you think of Brooksville.
You know, I think we do a great job in Brooksville of keeping that small-town feel with government rules, regulations, and permitting compared to cities like Tampa. But at the same time, we can do a better job of streamlining and permitting and doing less regulations in that process. What we do well is what we can also work on and be better. You know, in the private sector, things always move faster and more efficiently. And if we can get less government control and issues going on, I think the economy will flow, especially with the growing, I think we're in a rate that it's at right now.
So I believe that the thing the city does the best at the moment would be working with partners like Brooksville Main Street, albeit it's a recent development, but it's what needs to be happening. Chris said that our framing isn't so well. Well, I can see how you can think that if, you know, you've been around here recently, not paying attention to what's going on in Brooksville. But we've got some serious momentum going right now. The last three or four years, we've been pushing and we've been pushing hard. We want to make this place a place to raise our families, we want to make this place someone that's not going to be a subdivision in 30 years, but continue to be the small town of Brooksville. Something that I don't think we do well is plan for the future. Again, we're all sitting here talking about infrastructure. Obviously, that's a big issue. I think that, you know, 20 or 30 years ago, we should have been putting money to the side and either saying we're gonna do a big infrastructure project in the future, or we're gonna do small infrastructure projects every year, like what they're trying to do now with the road paving. But it needs to go further than the road paving, it needs to go underground and get into those pipes, because that's where our real issue lies.
Thank you. All right, Chris is gonna go first this next time. The city boundaries are irregular, but pass them, we ask this question of the county commissioners. City boundaries are irregular, road passes attempts by the city to change them have led to litigation from the county. Do you think the boundaries should be changed? What are your reasons? And what do you think the city council role should be in that? A one-minute response.
Well, the city council's role should be intimate, along with the county commissioners, as you mentioned. So the city boundaries need to be consolidated. How easy is it to provide service every other street or half of the street or across the street? How expensive is that for the city? How expensive is that for the county? So the first thing we should do is consolidate that. And I know that historically, some people have wanted parts of Brooksville in here, and those should pay attention to what's going on around here, see that every single day. So the city's comprehensive plan actually dictates that growth should not occur unless the infrastructure is ready to be put there, not have it put there into the future. So I think the city and the county should have a group, work together, solidify these boundaries, and then instead of being litigious and suing all the time, I guess attorneys might like that. But for the most part, work together, we're all here, we're Hernando County and we're also residents of the city. So work together, consolidate the boundaries.
You know, when you look at the boundaries and the city stuff and think just how they got there, keep in mind that anyone contiguous with the current city limits can request one becoming. And if they request one, that, that will gotta come before council to be voted upon. However, the city cannot just go out and on return and pick up anybody if they want to. We're not gonna get into an intimate domain type of situation for somebody to come in. The boundaries in there, yeah, everybody messed up, has taken place over years and years and years. To change them now, I'll tell you what, it's gonna be difficult. Because one thing the city does not want to do is force an annexation. But if someone wants to come in, if there's a developer that wants to come in for some reason or another, they're already touching the city boundaries, then that will go to vote and if it's voted upon, it'll come in. But as far as trying to straighten it out now, I think it'd be very, very difficult. The council just got to take it at the comfort of them and I'll put them in.
If you've ever taken a look at the city boundaries, they are absolutely insane. When you get home, pull up Brooksville, Florida on a map or everything inside the red dots. I know that's hard to believe, but I promise those are actually the city limits. Like Pat said, we can't force anybody to do anything, that's just not right. I'm a very, very conservative man, I don't think the government should make anybody do anything. But what we can do is we can go and we can talk to people, we can tell them the benefits living in the city, we can show them what our extraordinary services look like. We can ask them if they'd like to be a part of the city. And if they would, that grows the revenue in the city without having to increase everybody's taxes. Let's say that we have some big, pretty neighborhood like Southern Hills that wants to have some infrastructure, and they want to be taken care of by the city and they want city services instead. Well, we annex somebody like that in, we get all those tax dollars without having to raise more taxes, and then we can use it to reinvest in places like downtown.
Yeah, I agree, this is not our decision. I am pro voluntary annexation. You know, I want the people, the citizens of Brooksville, if they think they geographically fit and they want to be in the city, it's up to them to look at the pros and cons and weigh out what's best for me and my residency. We're not here to change any boundaries, it's up to the people whether they want to be in. And if they come to the city council, if they talk to me over social media, text me, call me, my number will be available. I'm here to listen and do what's best for the community, but also if they want to be in the city, God bless them. If they don't, let them make that decision, that's not on us.
I think it's Casey's turn to go first, is that right?
I think so.
Okay. Do you believe the city's comp plan needs to be revised? If so, what revisions are needed? And how does the comp plan impact the average Brooksvilleian? In one minute.
Right. Okay. So in short, the comp plan is the comprehensive plan and it's the direction the city council is supposed to be following and where we want the city to be in a decade or so. So we haven't revised or looked at the comp plan in some years now. And I'm not gonna say it's a bad plan, but what I am gonna say is all of your lives have changed drastically in the last three years, am I right? I know that my business has completely rebooted in the last three years. Between the global pandemic and the government's absolute inept response to it, everything needs to change. Everything needs to be looked at and at least reevaluated and make sure that it is still on par with the new problems we're facing.
Okay. As far as the comp plan goes, Casey is correct. It's a projected plan upwards of 10 to 20 years. Does it need to be changed? It can be changed, any request for change can be made by any resident. All they have to do is request that change to the planning department and it'll go through appropriate procedures. I think it's also important to note the comp plan is required by state laws to be looked at and reevaluated every five years. And it has done that. Keep in mind that these changes can be requested by anyone, any developer, we've had some, we've got some currently right now. But they have to go through the process, it goes through our planning department, which then goes through our planning zoning, which comes back with the council, it gets approved, all the reasons there, it goes to the state. Maybe six months or plus later, you'll get the approval from the state, the state's not in the fence. But it does affect everyone from because it sets out the growth, the idea of growth for the next 10 plus years.
The comprehensive plan, like the US Constitution, is a living document. It changes every day based on need. I think that the county age review about every 10 years and it's a plan that works for five, 10, 15, 20, 25 years. But every day, it's a changing document. The average citizen, part of the question, is affected daily by this, especially those of us, and I think there's three of us here who own homes and pay taxes. The plan provides continuity, now think about this, it provides continuity over time and leadership. So your board, your city-county boards, leadership can change. But the comp plan is there basically throughout all this, like the Constitution, it's the same sort of thing. So what I think, part of the question is what I think should be looked at, is I think it should be looked at, so when we're anticipating annexing growth or accommodating growth in the community, is to make sure that number one, the infrastructure that's current can handle what's going to be asked from that next community. And also, we have concurrent diversification in the economy to make sure that there's jobs and places for these people to work.
You know, to read through the comp plan, the mission and the vision is spot on, it's exactly what we need. Now, this was made back in 2017, like they said, before the pandemic, where 4,000 people a day were moving to Florida. And Ron DeSantis, who's been before, has created a great free market, so we still have up to 1,000 people a day moving into Florida. With that being said, the infrastructure and the growth plans need to be revised to accommodate the crazy growth from the people moving from the cities to the rural areas and everyone moving into the state of Florida as a whole.
You go off to Thomas. All right, we are at our quickfire question, which is 30 seconds. What is your Brooksville themed tree lighting program and why? There is not a wrong answer.
It has to be the Christmas tree lighting for me. The buildup of the vendors, the music, the lighting, everything about it just screams Brooksville and how we're bringing in the birth of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, into this community. I think that's so important, and the way that we do such a great, elegant job of that means so much to me. And this city was built on Christian faith and conservative values. And the way we celebrate Jesus Christ is so special to me, and that's why I love Brooksville.
As I was taking a look at all the items that you could consider, I took the one called the Florida Dermey Trail. And why did I choose that? Whenever I go to another city, I usually get on like the big red bus or take some sort of tour of that city. So I get to know the working parts of the innards, I guess you could say, of other cities. And I thought the way that they're doing that here is pretty integral. You get to go see other businesses that are in the community and you also get a little bit of exercise.
Tell me where it starts, please. My wife and I argue about this, but I lost. I can't name one fantastically according to my wife, is number one. But we both, we actually, we have to, it's Christmas tree lighting is probably one of the most fantastic things that I've been involved in and have been a part of for a few years now. It's just great, if you haven't been there, you need to go. But there's too many other things that they do good.
Already? So I think my favorite is actually the beautified Brooksville that we do quarterly. I think that it shows that Brooksville's a big family and it shows that the town had a lot of volunteerism and that we all don't necessarily want to get up early in the morning, but we get up with our roof boots on and we show up in front of the courthouse early in the morning and we say, Natalie, what do you want us to do? And then we're at her mercy and we do whatever she says. I covered myself in paint last weekend.
You look good.
And I will say, that has been the surprising event that was started almost by accident when we were having an event and we're just like, wow, it looks terrible down here. So we were like, let's just do pressure washers and get going. And next thing you knew, we had somebody two people downtown cleaning things up. And then they wanted to do it every month, which made me cry and wanna hide in a corner. And I said that we'll do it a couple of times a year. So this last one, we had 110 people that spent their morning cleaning and pressure washing and planting. The thing is that you have people of all ages. So Brent Nelson's son was there with his big lawn mower and his little toddler and this going around and mowing. And it's just a great, great way of allowing people to have ownership in their community and family. It's like, every time now that Andrea's husband drives by, fresh picked, he knows that he painted that wall and it's really exciting. So what I do, I'm reading all of you, those are all my favorites. We do have a new Christmas element coming in and I don't know where I'm putting it because we have a Christmas bowl for you to stand inside to take pictures. And it ended up being 16 feet by wide and 13 feet high, so I don't know where it's going. But it'll be our surprise and you'll eventually see the new thing. So no, we're always excited to add to Christmas. And of course, Florida will make sure we want us to create a state of work for us. We're gonna go, and I told you 30 seconds, I'm gonna give you one minute to do your closing in case there's anything that you got caught up on earlier that you wanted to say or anything that you want to make sure we communicate to people. And we will start with the mayor.
Mr. Mayor?
You know, you got four people up here that'll all do a good service for the city. I do believe experience doesn't matter. I'm offering my services and it's not like you make a big buck up there lately and you take an awful lot from unfortunate just a few people that, you know, I'm here to serve you. I've done what I could and done my best and I've taken work for the people these past four years and hopefully I can do it again, but if I don't, I'll keep a tab from time to time.
The way that I see it, the city's got two options. We can either roll over, let the county take over and hope that we don't turn into the suburb, you know, formerly known as the city of Brooksville. Or we can roll up our sleeves and we can get to work. This town, like I said earlier, is a special place. I'm invested here, I have a business here, I plan on raising my family here. I'm only 27 years old, I'm in this for the long haul. I want it to be right in 50 years from now. I can see how some people might not want to believe in the city if you've only been here for a short amount of time. We're going through a rough patch, but with this momentum that we have going thanks to people like Natalie and Brooksville Main Street, this is gonna be the place in the state, in the country on this planet. This is where you're gonna want to be in 30 years. My name is Casey Theryon, I'm your conservative and your local candidate for Brooksville City Council, seat number four.
I believe that all three, all four of us, I should say, all four of us candidates believe in the city of Brooksville or we wouldn't be sitting here doing this. Whether we have different reasons, I know as Pat alluded to, I'm sure it's not the money. Some of the things that happen to occur is, as we've all mentioned and all agree, is cooperation with the county. I had eight years of experience with the county. I still remember a lot of people and I think I could be extremely beneficial in making sure that Brooksville is able to brand itself better, at least I think, better than it is at this particular moment. And that can eventually lead to it being one of the greatest cities around. But we need people more than just to cheer for the city. We need people who are gonna make sure that it's a success when it's happening, who understands basic government and stuff like that. Two of us, I think you do, I have an MBA from St. Louis, which doesn't necessarily make me smart, but it does give me, or has given me tools to make sure that some of the things that we're on are successful. So in order for this to work, and everybody said the same thing about lower taxes, lower government, more opportunities, I think Chris Kingsley is probably the best choice for that in my seat, seat four.
I just, first of all, I want to thank my campaign team, my family, everyone else who's involved. It's been such a blessing to see this community come together and rally behind me and my goals and my vision to serve the people of Brooksville. I've been endorsed by Wilson Simpson, Blazing Go-Head, Jeff Colcom, Brian Hawkins, Doug Corvath, and not to mention the majority of the current city council. I'm confident that it's time for a change and I'm here to bring a light to this city and serve the people the best way I feel possible. Thank you. Thank you.
Can we give them one more round of applause?